And I will call the Special Comment Council meeting to order. It is 6:30. Can we get a roll call there?
Jennings.
Here.
Shore.
Here.
Nabel.
Here.
Zerazua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Slawinski.
Here.
Niebo.
Here.
Dugan.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Phillips. Here. Morrow. All are present.
All are present. Thank you. First item on the agenda is a resolution for a conditional use permit to the Stevens Point Area Public Schools at 210201 North Point Drive to construct two additions and reconstruct parking lots at the Stevens Point Area Senior High School. Kyle, you want to give us a recap? I think everyone was here, but let's just do it again for the people who may only watch this meeting.
Sure. Let me start from the beginning. So again, the Stevens Point Area Public School District is requesting to construct two additions, one on the west side, one on the east side of the existing high school. They're also looking to reconstruct two parking lots, one on the northwest and one on the east side of the facility. The property is owned R2 and B4, but the facility is only on the R2 side of the zoning. And any change to the site addition or parking would require this conditional use permit. I have summarized the locations on the map. Here are photos. On the left, you've got the addition location on the west side, again, which will be to expand the cafeteria and provide some restroom facilities. And on the right photo, you have the location of the addition to the shop. Site plans have been provided in the packet. Here's a rendering of the west side addition. And a site plan of the east side shop addition. With regards to the standards of review, we feel as though it's appropriate. It fits within the existing character of the building. It should not be in conflict with the surrounding area. The additions are internal to the site. The parking lot reconstruction isn't necessarily changing the design hugely. It's not affecting the access to the site. And the addition should not increase enrollment. Thus, they should not necessarily need to increase parking. They have plenty on site. Therefore, we would recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the conditions outlined in the packet.
Okay. Thank you very much. Alder persons, what are your wishes? Alder Phillips?
I'd like to move approval of that resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person Slawinski. Any discussion there? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Can we get a roll call vote, please? And loudly, Paul, because the microphone's got to pick you up.
Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebo.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Eleven zero.
Eleven zero. The conditional use permit is approved. With permission from the council, unless nobody objects, I would like to move item number six up to the next item on the agenda. Are there any objections to doing that from the council? Okay. Item number six is the mayoral appointment of interim community development director, DJ Snyder. DJ is in the back. He has been with us for a while, and we would like to have a little bit of time to carry over. The application window for community development director closes next Wednesday, the 14th, I believe, but we're likely not going to get someone on board before Director Ostrowski leaves us. So we would like to have a transition period with DJ Snyder, and then once we hire somebody, they will take over completely. Alder Dugan?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion from Alder Dugan to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Person Morrow. Any discussion? Alder Jennings?
Troy Jennings, Alder District One. I will be opposing this decision. With all due respect to DJ Snyder, he's a zoning guy. He's not a planner. He's been with us for about 18 months. Kyle Kearns has been here a long time, has planning background, has been working side by side with Director Ostrowski on everything that is going on in the city and has been for years. It seems like the obvious choice is Kyle Kearns, and again, I will be voting no on this.
Thank you. Alder Johnson, President Johnson.
Melissa Johnson, District Five. I too will be opposing this, not because Mr. Snyder isn't a really good regulator. He's a really good regulator, and I think we've seen that demonstrated in his approach and commitment to many of the rundown properties we have in this community. But my experience, you don't put a regulator in the place where you have a need for an out-of-the-box thinker. Regulators are very black and white, or at least in my experience. And again, I echo what Alder Jennings said. It's not that I don't think he's a very good person and eminently qualified as a regulator. So that's why my no vote.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. I'm going to give you a little bit of background. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it. Go ahead.
David Shore, Second District, Alder. Just related to the search and just to note the importance of the position, I think we spend more time consulting with the development director than with any of the other directors. And I say that on the basis of just all the late evenings that we spend reviewing development proposals, developer proposals. And so I just wanted to highlight that importance and note the stake that the city has in the position, that the council has in the position. And so if there's a way for us to connect somehow to the search, I think that'd be good.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Nabel?
Cindy Nabel, District Three. Once again, I'd also like to say again the same. DJ Snyder has been wonderful. In fact, I don't know what I would do without him, as he has been very helpful with the area that I am in, which is District Three, which is in the university area. So there's a lot of issues and a lot of students have questions, and he's able to help me help them. So he's invaluable. I mean, he knows his stuff inside and out, so I know who to go to. But I would think that Kyle Kearns has been doing the zoning and ordinance rewrites and everything that we've been going through and the master plan with Director Ostrowski. And it just seems such an obvious linkage, at least if he doesn't want it as a job leader, but at least to keep that part of it, everything going and keeping. There's so many things we have going in the air right now. I wouldn't want to be DJ to do it. I think that's a lot to put on somebody. I really do. And someone that's come into it, and he's already got a lot that he has to deal with from years of things that have, you know, not always gone the way, the direction we're trying to go for the city. Kyle's been doing that, and he's mentored with Michael, and Michael mentored with, you know, our previous mayor. I just think we've got this continuity that's so important to have anywhere. You know, families, that's why they can do things and get things done. And I think that's what we have here, and we need to keep that. So I would hope that we could, I would be voting no also.
Thank you. Tell us how you're going to vote, Alder Person.
Not going to do it.
Jeremy Slawinski, Alder Sixth District. I guess if I could just have an explanation from the mayor, the reason why.
Thank you. Wow. What a novel idea. So the reason that I have Director DJ, or DJ Snyder before you is twofold. One, Kyle is an integral part of the department, has been involved with the zoning options and most of the things that relate to economic development in some fashion. I'm not speaking for him. I don't want to put him on the spot, and I was hoping we didn't have to do this, but there's a chance that Mr. Kearns will apply for the position. Mr. Snyder has no intention of applying for the position and will be there to handle the day-to-day operations, which mainly deal with staff. Kyle is still going to be there, doing everything that he's always been doing, but the day-to-day operations will be run by Mr. Snyder, should this appointment, interim appointment go through, thereby not creating a potential bias for anyone who would be on the deciding team to hire the new community development director, thus putting Kyle at a potential disadvantage or advantage. There will be no bias there. So that is why we talked internally with several staff members, including Mr. Kearns, and came to the recommendation that is before you of having DJ Snyder be the interim director until we can find a replacement.
Thank you.
Alder Dugan?
Alder Dugan, District Eight, and I move to approve Mr. Snyder. And I think, although I hadn't talked to you, I think I thought that was the reasoning behind it. And I think it's a very good reasoning. And I also agree with all the alders who spoke in favor of Kyle. If I could vote for him, I would. And if I could vote for DJ to stay there, I would, because they're both excellent. And I think it was a good choice.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person Slawinski. Any continued discussion? Alder Jennings?
Troy Jennings, Alder District One. The statement about bias, I guess I have to disagree with that, because I have seen frequently people put into interim positions who are applying for positions, and then they go on to be, to receive that position. That happens in academia. It happens in business. It happens in government. Happens all the time. It's not unusual, so I guess I don't accept that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Ostrowski?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'll be vacating this position the 21st of August, and I had talked to the mayor about this, and I think DJ is very qualified in terms of a supervisor to run the department in the interim, not saying Mr. Kearns is not. Mr. Kearns has been very invaluable to this department almost since I've been with the city. He came very shortly after I did. However, from a day-to-day standpoint, DJ has the supervision experience. He's run other corporations and companies. So with that, I'd recommend that we go in that direction for the interim. As we look to hire a full-time director, I think Mr. Kearns would make a very good choice moving forward in this position.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? As a member of the public, absolutely.
Want me to go up?
No, the microphone still works.
All right. I'm just wondering that if Kyle got appointed, would he have somebody appointed to help him out, or would we be doubling his workload?
So we would not hire someone to fill in Kyle's position during the interim, but we're not hiring anyone to fill in for DJ's position either. They're just assumed, that person would assume some extra responsibility among everybody else in the department, too. Maria's going to be taking on more work. Kyle will be taking on more work, because we're losing a director for a period of time. Sorry, surprise.
All right. No, it makes sense.
So everyone in the department, as well as regular city staff, will be kind of pulling the weight until we have that replacement. And then, when that replacement finally gets settled, then we could probably go back to normal.
All right. Yep, that's good.
Any other comments? Hearing none. We're going to vote in place, but again, be loud so the microphones can pick you up. The motion is to approve the appointment of DJ Snyder as interim director. If you are in favor, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you'll vote no. And the clerk will please call that roll.
Jennings?
No.
Shore.
Aye.
Nabel.
No.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebo.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Eight three.
Eight three. The motion is adopted. Thank you. And at this point, I will recess our council meeting until such time as the city plan commission meeting agenda is exhausted. So the council now stands adjourned at whatever time it is, 6:45. So I will call, reconvene the Special Comment Council meeting. Roll call shows that everyone is still present. We have a couple of, three items left on the agenda. The first one, item number three, is an amendment to the development agreement with General Capital Acquisitions LLC for the construction of a residential development at 1443 Water Street and 1447 Water Street. The next two items are related. Director Ostrowski, did you want to speak to that?
Thanks, Mayor. So this item is looking to amend the development agreement with the development for the 88-unit senior housing deal that is right across from Edgewater as part of their financing contingency that they have within the development agreement. They do need to seek other sources of financing. This is one of them, but they do need to show control of the property through like January 20th, which would require us to amend our development agreement to allow them to do so. So this is really just an extension of a month so they can show control of that property.
Okay. Questions for the director? Alder Jennings?
I just going to move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Dalton. Comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Jennifer Bursh, just representing General Capital Group. I just want to be here in case you have any questions or anything, but you did a great job detailing that specific item.
Thank you for staying.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? I believe we should probably do a roll call vote on this, because there's financial components to it. So if you are in favor of the motion to approve, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and we'll have the clerk loudly call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Niebo.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Eleven zero.
Eleven zero. That is adopted. Item number four is a waiver slash modification of municipal fees for a project at 1443 Water Street and 1447 Water Street. Director?
So this is kind of similar to, or goes in conjunction with kind of the application for additional financing that we just approved for the modification to the development agreement. As part of this other source of financing, it's a very competitive process, so they have to go and get points, and the higher points you get, the more likely you are to be awarded. One of the points that they can get is showing that if the municipality is supportive of the project and doing so by waiving $500 of permit fees, park fees, utility fees, they can get an additional point for that. I don't think this sets precedent, as, you know, we've committed financially to this project. There are a lot of benefits of this project. Furthermore, they're going to be doing a significant amount of improvements within the public right-of-way, kind of almost like a little pocket park, parklet-type structure, benches, flagpole, seedings. So with that, the zoning fee for this project ironically maxes out at 500, which they will hit, so we'd recommend just waiving that fee to move forward to allow them to get their points and hopefully get the additional financing with that approval.
Thank you. Comments from the council? Alder Phillips?
Move to waive the modification?
Clarifying that you are going to move to waive the $500 in zoning fees. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Seconded by President Johnson. Any discussion there? Comments from the audience? Hearing none. Could you please call the roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Nabel.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Niebo.
Aye.
Dugan.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Phillips.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Eleven zero.
Eleven zero. That is adopted. Item number five is the approval of extending restriping, the restriping design for Stanley Street. I'm going to preface this a little bit, and by all means, jump in if, well, actually, don't jump in. Wait till after I'm done, and then correct me if I'm wrong.
Are you giving us permission to interrupt you?
Yeah. See, it worked.
Yeah.
So this has been debated at length for a very long time. The previous motion back in, I think it was October, was to solicit bids, and I might have the date wrong on that, to solicit bids for restriping. At the time, the concern was how much can we afford to do based on the budget? So there were two options given. One was Lindbergh, the other one was Indiana, getting both of them to talk about, to see what we could afford. Since then, that was reconsidered, purchasing our own equipment, which would allow us to do more if necessary. So the request that's before you is not the original restriping. It is the extension of what I will say is about one block going from the eastmost approved portion to further east to Wilshire. Sorry, I don't have the map in front of me, so I'm going off of memory. And that's what we're talking about here. We have the ability to do that, because we purchased the equipment. The merits of the restriping for the previously approved part is not up for discussion. That has been approved. We're looking at that additional one block. The reason we're doing this in a special meeting is not to circumvent any process or to do things that may seem underhanded to some, but we had people trained on the equipment that was purchased. One of those people, who I believe to be very critical, one of the drivers who was trained on the machine, his last day is Wednesday. He has taken a job with a different municipality. So the options that we have at this point are, look at this one block extra. We're doing tomorrow the restriping, weather permitting. It will either be to the boundary that was previously approved or that extra block, and the director can speak to why that would be warranted if he'd like. But the extra block is what we would look at tonight, so it gets done tomorrow. Or we could wait and postpone the project, which I'm not in favor of doing, until someone new gets hired and then subsequently trained and so on. So before you is that one block extension. And I know that some of the alders had been briefed on that, but if we need clarification, we can certainly have the director come up here. Alder Shore, you had a comment?
I wanted to make a motion.
By all means.
I move approval of the Stanley Street project as extended and amended in the detailed plan in the council packet.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We'll give the second to Alder Person Jennings. Discussion?
Oh, if I could just...
Sure, absolutely.
There was a letter from Chief Skiba.
Yep.
And I just think that that should be noted in the record, that the redesign doesn't affect public safety.
Would you read that verbatim, Madam President?
It says, "To Mayor Wiesa, President Johnson, and Director Badun," it's from Chief Skiba. "The police department is aware that approval has been given to redesign a portion of Stanley Street east of Michigan Avenue. The design will reduce the lanes of traffic from two lanes to one lane for east and westbound traffic. However, the width of the actual road itself will not be affected in this redesign. As the redesign relates to police responses to this area and traveling through this main thoroughfare, there is no negative impact that would appear to be created by the redesign. Additionally, in other areas of the city where bicycle lanes have been introduced, officers are cognizant of the potential increase in bicycle traffic and patrol. Accordingly, sincerely, Martin Skiba, Chief of Police, Stevens Point Police Department."
Thank you, President Johnson.
You're very welcome.
Alder Dugan?
I have emails from three different constituents. Would this be a good time to let them have their say?
Yes.
Okay. Because I don't see any of them here this evening, unless Scott Wasinski is here, but I don't think so. Okay. The first one is from Diane Ostrowski, who is on Stanley Street. "I understand there's a meeting Monday to discuss the extending of the restriping on Stanley to Green Avenue. All the lengthy paperwork I have from the initiation of the project indicates the project was to be from Michigan to Indiana with easement at East Maria. I also remember discussion of how many thousands of dollars per block. I was under the understanding that the budget was already approved for this project as originally stated, so why is there a vote to extend the project some almost two long blocks farther? At the 11th hour, I might add, since the meeting is 6:30 on Monday and the road closed at 5:30 Tuesday, seems a little shady to me. A few of us that lived in the affected area do not remember seeing anything in regard to this meeting bring open either. I am not able to be there Monday, so I wanted my thoughts brought to light, which is why I'm reading it. The majority of businesses, Schuda, Ascension, Family Practice, Orthodontist, Wisconsin Eye Clinic, Wilshire Trailer, Central Wisconsin Radiologist, and especially Quick Trip live between Indiana and Green, and I feel this could cause undue traffic flow issues. My opinion is that it's not common sense to extend the road diet. Since the barrels are set to be put in place all the way to Green, it seems the meeting is just a formality for a decision that's already made, just to make it look like it's on the up and up. Well, that's my worthless two cents, but I have a right to be heard." That's Diane Ostrowski, who lives on Stanley. The next is from Eva Richter, who also lives on Stanley, and another opponent. Both have spoken in the past. "Hi, Kathy. Yesterday, I heard through the grapevine that there is a meeting on Monday evening to discuss the extension of the restriping project on Stanley. Are you going to be notifying the residents in your district about this meeting? I think it's important that the residents, especially those on Stanley Street, are informed of this meeting, or is it supposed to be a secret so they don't show up to share their opinions?" Now, it's interesting, both of these people, when they wrote to me on August 2nd, had not gotten the letter from Public Works, which was sent out on August 2nd. So that's a little worrisome. But anyway, "As you already know, I'm totally against having the bike lanes in front of my house, which is directly across from Quick Trip. Seeing that you are our Alder Person representing our district, I think it would be worth your while to stop over and watch what's going on in my area from around 3:30 until 5:00 today or around 7:00 until 8:15 Monday morning. Believe me, there is a lot of traffic even during the summer and even more during the academic year, as there are a lot of college students who use the street. You are welcome to park in my driveway. I feel if you and other council members would take some time and see what goes on in this area, you definitely would understand why the restriping to Green Avenue is not a good idea. I also find it interesting that we have not yet received our letter notifying us of the project and that the project is scheduled to start on Monday and the meeting is Monday evening. Well, Tuesday, actually. This does not make sense to me. Sincerely, Eva Richter." And she copied the mayor on this. And the final one is from Scott Wasinski, who lives on Jordan, really almost on Jordan and Green, but he's in favor. He says, "Thank you again for your support of the Stanley Street road diet and for being a bicyclist advocate." That's it.
I got you. Trying to figure out where Jordan was. Alder Jennings?
Just to reiterate what's already been said, this is not a decision about whether or not the 4-3 conversion is going to take place, but as these comments about some kind of secrecy are being implicitly suggested, going back again is following up on what the mayor said back in September. That's when the bids were sent out.[1697.58] the project this winter with Streets Department staff to create a traffic control plan, order materials, and evaluate project limits." That was restated in the director's report in January 2019. It was restated again in February 2018. What did that mean? No, 19. March 2019, added to that statement was AE Comm was retained. The director explained that AE Comm was retained to provide engineering services, to review design, and assist with traffic control for Stanley and Green. For 10 years, the idea has always been to do a safety conversion on Stanley, as it relates to the Green intersection. That's what the engineering says to do. This is not coming out of the blue. It's also not up to us to micromanage Public Works. So when the political decision was made to do a 4-3 conversion on Stanley, as a community development issue, which is what it is, we should not be micromanaging Public Works. After that, it's up to Public Works to execute the best engineering choices for that street, and the most efficient and cost-efficient. This hasn't come out of the blue. The engineering for more than 10 years is said to do a 4-3 conversion on Stanley, and deal with the Green Avenue intersection. If we make some modification right now, we're actually costing more money, because the lines that are the transition zone into the undivided four lane into the three lane, those lines will have to be eradicated and everything restripped again. So we're not saving money if we do this in phases. Let's do this right from the start, not set up a situation where lines need to be obliterated, restripped again. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the audience? Yes, sir?
Dave Wysocki, I live at 2409 Falcons Cove in the city. I operate a business at 2740 Stanley Street, right on the corner of Minnesota and Stanley Street. This mess has been going on for three years. My first recollection of it is Mr. Shore coming into my office and inviting me to the city meeting to be held at Washington School. It was not a city meeting, and this is probably for the benefit of the two new alders, because you aren't privy, haven't been privy to a lot of this. The city meeting to announce the bike lanes. I said, "That's the stupidest idea I ever heard." Mr. Shore walked out. Went to the meeting, I had heard about it. Goes on and on, where you wonder why we're skeptical. It's all about safety on Stanley Street. I asked an alder, again, Mr. Shore, could you give me some facts, public facts, from the police department? What are the facts about accidents on Stanley Street, bike, pedestrian, vehicle? I asked twice, never got them. I asked Alder Memorial, I had the information the next day. It's information, it's public information from the City of Stevens Point Police Department. Had it the next day. So it's there, and it was there, and it was not provided when I asked for it. Further on, to further promote this, and I know what you're going to do, I know what's going to happen, I'm not stupid, I know where you're all going to vote. It's going to promote more business on Stanley Street. Again, you kind of do a facepalm. You've got a bar, and a liquor store, and accountant's office, a trucking and excavating firm, a trailer shop, an auto repair shop, a funeral home, a construction company. This isn't State Street in Madison, where you've got a bunch of cutesy little shops. Bike traffic is not going to increase anyone, it's not going to increase my business. Talked to Dean Schuda, probably not going to increase his either. There's a whole bunch of them along there. And I know there aren't a lot more people here tonight, because they've all said, "To hell with it." It's not worth fighting it anymore, because it's going to happen. I've decided I'm going to get my last two cents' worth in, and I'm going to go down swinging. I know what you're going to do, but you're going to hear me out. Some of the stuff we've heard from alderpeople, she's no longer on the board, but one of the quotes, speaking about us people that were against the project, "We wouldn't know progress if it bit us in the butt." Think about that a while. How do you like that? Why do you think you'd say, "To hell with what they're saying"? Another one, at the meeting at the church on Wilshire Boulevard, it was in the spring, a reasonable compromise that we thought Mr. Badun had come up with flashing lights at the intersection of Minnesota and Stanley as a traffic calming action. And we all kind of said, "Yeah." You know, I think that, everybody there said, "Yeah, that might work." At the end, an alderperson that's still on the committee right now, stood up and said, "Really doesn't matter what you think, we're going to do what we want, anyway." That's her exact words. Thanks, Alder Jennings. We appreciate it. Yes, you were there. Don't...
And, no, I didn't say that.
Yes, you did.
Okay, we're not going to engage in individual debate. Please continue.
One of the others, and I heard a comment from Chief Skiba tonight, that it's not going to change anything. One of the things that, at a meeting here in this room, we talked about hiring experts, and we got some expert from Indiana, that traffic calming or 4-3 conversion is the way to do it. Hell, he hadn't been in Stevens Point for years, he's from Indiana, but you completely disregarded the witness of a 32 veteran of the Stevens Point Police Department, Mr. Carlson, who said, "There really doesn't need to be anything done there, we don't really see an issue." It's really a no-vehicle issue, or let's reduce vehicles. Another item, and again, this all gets back to why we're skeptical, and why we've battled this. The bike count, this is amazing. It happens to be done every year on the Art and the Park Weekend, when that's the biggest bike traffic probably in the city, one of the biggest ones. This last year, and the people on Stanley Street are just going to blow their mind. Supposedly, the people that counted the corner of Stanley and Minnesota, counted 32 bikes in a span of two hours. I asked the person that told me that, I said, "Were they counting by eights or tens?" Why are we skeptical? Keep going. Going beyond this, it's going to happen, we know where you're going to vote, so I take it a step further. How are you going to assure all of us that the bike people, the masses of bike people are going to obey the laws? I've got two examples that happened to me just in the last two weeks. I live north of Stevens Point, off of Reserve Street. Going home, I go on Michigan Avenue, which intersects with North Point Drive, the four-way intersection by Century. I'm coming north on Reserve Street, excuse me, Michigan Avenue is at that point, I come to the four-way stop, coming from the other way, which has now been restripped, there's a left-turn lane on Reserve, there's a right-turn lane, there's a bike lane. In order to allow for the right-turn lane for the vehicles, the bike lane ends, and cars are able to pull over, take a right turn. I saw a car coming south on Reserve Street, and the bicycle was a fair distance behind the car. The car had its turn signal on, the car's coming at me, had its turn signal on, it was going to turn west on North Point Drive, pulled over into the right-turn lane. The bike coming up behind him probably was 50, 60 yards behind, never slowed down, swerved into that left-hand turn, what would be the left-hand turn lane, went right straight through the intersection, onto Michigan Avenue. I laid on the horn, and I will continue to lay on horn every time I see it, whether it's a vehicle or a bike. But when you lay on the horn and yell at somebody, you expect a response, and this goof just kept going. I'll give you one more example, and I'm going to get the hell out of here. When I go take my mail from my office, I go to the post office, I go and put it in the boxes, I turn left, I go around the castle, and I go north on Prentice Street, that's my easiest way out of downtown to go north. Go past the castle, and go north on Prentice Street, I don't know if it's Prentice Street at that point, stop at Center Point Drive, I go across, and we have a really short block, there's one house between Center Point Drive and College Avenue. College Avenue is supposed to stop, it turns into College Court, west of Prentice. A lady on a bike, and this is really going to blow your mind, she had a little kid in a trailer behind her bike.
Yeah, I see that all the time, people are crazy.
Alder, please.
And, exactly. I watch this stuff, and it's not like the house is right on the corner, so you can't see the stop sign, so it's right there. And you don't go very fast, you just get a park across Center Point Drive, and you've got to keep, and you don't have any chance to pick up speed. This lady blew through the stop sign, going west on College Avenue, into College Court, with her little kid in her trailer behind her. Had I not been watching, she'd have been smoked. She very well could have been. And I yell out the window, I said, "Lady, you're supposed to stop at a stop sign." She says, "To hell with you, I did." So, you wonder why we're skeptical? Damn right, we're skeptical. The whole thing isn't warranted, never has been from the start. You know, one other example, last one. I invite you to go to the Community Foundation Facebook page, and watch a video of the Tri-Shaw, which is a great program, I understand that, I get that, people get out. A convoy of three Tri-Shaws at the north end of the square going out towards Pithner Park. There's a stop sign on the corner, as you're looking at Midstate Tech School, if you went straight, you drive into the door of Midstate Tech School, through the stop sign, turn left on whatever street that is, never stopped. So, you wonder why we're skeptical? You wonder why we are negative when we get the single-finger salute from bike riders? That's exactly why. And they've been empowered by a lot of this stuff. And again, I'm speaking for a lot of people that have already said, "To hell with it, they're going to do it anyway." That's my two cents. Thank you very much, I know what you're going to do anyway. Thank God I'm retiring in three years, and I ain't going to be around.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Any other comments from the audience? Okay, Alders, Alder Nabel?
Thank you. I have never spoken on this subject, because I have not been able to go to any of the meetings, because it was a quorum. So I obeyed that and didn't go. And I've often had comments I'd like to make, and every time I've tried to, on a Facebook thing, which I quit doing, I got shot down, and ridiculed, and made to feel lower than anything on the bottom of my foot. So I quit. Stanley and Minnesota Street, I do walk on Stanley Street, I'm not a big bike rider. I'm a walker, and when I get a chance, and when I did have a dog, I liked to walk a dog. And I would walk, and I would go, only, only could I walk and go to Stanley and Michigan, because it had lights. I couldn't go down further, I had to go down this, to that area, to be able to get across, and it was, and you had to walk fast, because it wasn't very long for a light, and people were turning. It was never even a good place to cross then, even with lights. I always thought we needed something more further down. I get it, it costs money. So, that's one thing. Second, there's a new facility that the UWSP is putting up, putting a lot of money into, at Schmickley. From what I've heard, people in, as we always called it, City Park, are very excited about that, that have families and children that, wow, they'll be able to go across Stanley Street, and go through, and go over there, and it's not just about Stanley Street. We aren't just one street, and I've had to learn, I'm not just one piece of a block next to the university, and only worry about, because, oh my God, the students do this, or they do that, which, they are wonderful. It's the ones that aren't wonderful. But I had to look at it bigger. We all have to. We can't just not look at both sides of it, and that's where we run into these problems, and it really makes me sick. And I have been sick, for a lot of things on this council. And the last thing, and Schmickley will draw a lot of people to go across that road. It really will. It's going to be a beautiful facility with that atrium and everything that they're doing, it will be great. And the last thing is, I've hit two people, two people that were on bikes. When I was pulling out of somewhere, because I keep thinking, bikes should be on the road. I look, when I look, when I'm backing up, I'm looking on the road. When I'm looking to cross the road, I'm looking at the road. It's really, there are people that have shrubs right up to the sidewalks, you barely can see them, especially around a lot of the rental properties, I hate to say, not just the rental property, but I mean, a lot of people just don't think of those things, they just don't think that far. We all have to slow down and take time, and to remind people. But I hit two people, they walked away from it, but my God, I couldn't believe that I did that, and that's because they were on a sidewalk, and I didn't expect it. And the third time thing was when my granddaughter, who was three, ran out of our house, off of our two steps, which go right onto the sidewalk, and we're one block from the university. And a kid went whizzing past on the sidewalk, and almost ran her over, and I grabbed her up just in time. So, I always thought it was a law to be on the street, that you had to be on the street. And I agree with you, people do not stop, not even cars. I mean, the poor police, they can try as much as they can. One of the reasons they're doing this is because they cannot be there 24/7 enough to get these people that, they do speed on that road. I'm glad I don't live on, I feel for the people, because that is dangerous. If a ball went out in the road, and your dog or your kid went running out, it'd be done. This is a chance to try something, it's paint. I hate to see our town dividing like this, and I just want to say that to you, because I really, I never got to say that at any of these meetings. I'm not a biker. I got a bike, maybe I didn't get on it once yet this year. I like to walk, but it's not about the biking thing, it's about people being able to mingle with each other, and see each other, and get from one, just not on Stanley Street, but to go beyond Stanley Street, that there is more Stevens Point in that other area. We have to broaden all of Stevens Point to show how great Stevens Point is, not just in one area. So, I'm sorry, I do understand how you feel, because I have felt it through Facebook, no, I mean, just through Facebook, how people just shut you down. So, I saw, I just wanted to have the chance to say that, but I'm disappointed in our city for having it go like it has. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Phillips?
Just want to, a question, point of clarification. When these stripes go in, are bicycles allowed on the sidewalks?
Yes. If this body would, yes, bicycles will still be allowed on the sidewalks. I see your look of confusion, Alder Shore. There is no ordinance change associated with the restriping.
Doesn't the ordinance currently?
No, it doesn't.
I thought it did.
We're getting a little off-topic, I'm just going to end it by saying, if this body wants to make an ordinance prohibiting bicycles on the sidewalk, that is within your purview at a different time.
Yes.
We are talking about this additional striping, and that's it.
Got it.
That's it.
Okay?
Good to know.
Any other comments from the council? Alder Sloinski?
So, as everybody knows, I've been concerned with this whole entire project, you know, the portion down by Michigan Avenue. My biggest concern is the safety. I'm just really concerned on how this is all going to, at the busy times of the day. And now that we're looking at extending this down further east, down Stanley, I am really concerned about that intersection of Green Avenue. I don't travel in that area a whole lot, I kind of live south of here, but the few times that I have, like, say, I'm pulling at Scofidi, or the Honda, Mopar dealer there, I've had a real struggle pulling out off of Green onto Stanley, say, I'm going west into town, or if I'm crossing, and going further north on North Point. I'm really concerned that, I mean, the times that I have utilized this intersection, cars coming from the east, heading west on 66, there's been many times where I've had to look, you know, look down the road and say, "Okay, that car is in the outside lane, I can jump in and get into that inside lane if I'm heading east," or, I'm sorry, west, you know, and there's still the ability for the other car to, you know, to avoid any collision. Now we're looking at, basically, literally, less than 100 feet, 100 feet for an intersection, everybody's going to be forced down to one lane. That does not make any sense to me whatsoever. And I am really concerned about the safety, and I will not support this. And I hope I'm wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Alder Dugan?
I want to just comment on Mr. Wysocki's comments, and my constituents' comments. And I understand how they feel, that's why, well, I would have read for them anyway. I understand. I understand how dangerous it can be on Stanley, because I live near Stanley, and I use it a lot, as a bicyclist, too, but mostly on the sidewalk. I understand.
I also understand what Alder Nabel is saying, and as a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Commission, I am making it a real priority of mine to educate bicyclists, because that is a serious problem. Well, of course, these days, cars are blowing through also, but when a bicycle does, you're in far more danger. Everybody gets hurt, and some people get killed that way. There's not enough education about biking in Stevens Point. And if we can get bicycle, and we will get bicycle lanes on Stanley, I mean, I would love to use it. And there are other people, in the neighborhoods next to Stanley, not those who live on it necessarily, although one wants to ride it. I would do it because I'm a longtime bicyclist, and I know how to do that. But I want people to understand better, and the city needs to take action, I think, in making everybody understand more, educate themselves about how to ride a bicycle, and, well, I can't tell people how to drive a car, but a bicycle, people don't know, they do, just blow right through, or they go around you, so, I understand that part of it, can be a real problem. That's it.
Thank you.
You're going to Wilshire, right?
Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve the addition. We have a motion to approve the addition. It's been seconded. I'm going to take this opportunity to give a PSA. Yes, some bicyclists do not follow the rules, but not all bicyclists. Yes, some motorists do not follow the rules, but not all motorists. And this goes down to skateboarders and even pedestrians. Basically, what I'm asking is follow the rules. Stop at stop signs, be cautious of where you are and your surroundings, stay off your cell phone, stay off distractions, cross in crosswalks, come to a full and complete stop in your vehicle, obey the speed limits. These are things that we should all be doing, and it has nothing to do with this one-block extension, but it has everything to do with everything else. If you are opposed to this and this motion fails, the restriping will continue as planned for the original distance. We are only talking about this extra, I believe it's one block between two streets, right? Extending it one street further. So, if you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to the motion, you will vote no, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Morrow?
No.
Phillips?
No.
Toll?
Aye.
Dugan?
Aye.
Niebo?
Aye.
Sloinski?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Nabel?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
8:30. The motion is adopted, and we ask everybody to be patient. We should have the road closed only for a day. We should be open on Wednesday again, provided everything goes okay. With that, our agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned at 8:49.